Okay, I think I'll start out. Thank you very much for the time for us to be before you today. What we have is a good comprehensive overview of the annexation package and we've had a process to date. And I, I'm just gonna start it off by saying that the annexation procedure in a general sense is what, what the city does and should do on a regular basis. It's something that we've done historically. We haven't had an annexation package. That's not part of the regular development process, which we do piecemeal annexations as that happens every year. But we haven't had a package like this since 2008 and we believe it's time for an updated package to come forward. And we've done a very nice process to date following the, the guidelines of our comprehensive plan. And Paul and Andrew really have taken the lead on this, so I'm gonna hand it off to them. But I wanted to kind of set the stage with, that we feel confident about this proposal and we want to provide you the overview today in advance of this coming forward through the approval process. So with that, I'm gonna hand it off to Paul.
Hey. Good afternoon. Thank you for having us. I'll just note that we do have a handout that you should all have before you. There's some summarized bullet points. This material will be in the presentation that we'll walk you through. But also there is a schedule on the top right there that we anticipate bringing forward to planning commission and then on to you folks at the city council. The backside of the handout does highlight the eight sub areas that we're recommending for annexation. So as David said, the last city-initiated annexation package that we had done was in 2008. And I'll just note that, you know, our comprehensive plan suggests that we do this on a more regular basis. So it has been nine years, almost 10 years, but I think moving forward, we're gonna get on more of a regular schedule to take a look at this material. It would probably be one, every one to two years. I think that if we get on a more regular schedule, you're gonna see probably fewer of these coming forward, potentially as a group. The eight that we have identified, you know, there were some of these that were actually looked at and recommended for annexation in 2008. So we're coming back nine, 10 years later and recommending those same areas. I think if we get on a more consistent schedule, that, you know, eight is probably a lot. Maybe you'd see less than that, I would think. So for the presentation agenda, we're gonna go over the overview of the annexation process, what that entails, what we've done in our research, including the methodology that's outlined in the comprehensive plan in our annexation policy. And after that, I'm gonna hand it over to Andrew and he's gonna walk us through each individual area and give us some of the high points, the criteria that it's meeting in order to be considered for annexation. So just to kind of give you a little bit of background, the, the annexation study was published in July of this year. We did put together, you know, several months of work ahead of that being available, that draft study. So it actually started pretty early in 2017 with our work. And then we did reach out to the affected property owners and we held four neighborhood meetings over two weeks in late August, which I feel that, you know, was a good outreach effort. Our comprehensive plan tells us that we should do that and so of course we did. We want to be transparent through this process. We do have upcoming planning commission meetings scheduled for these packages. The first one being September 27th, so that's next week Wednesday at planning commission. And then following that, we'll bring forward the areas to city council. So the eight areas won't be coming forward to you at one time. We actually did split them up a little bit to cover several of those meetings. So as David was mentioning, annexation usually and typically is done as part of a development request. So there's a property owner, there's a developer, someone on the edge of town who has undeveloped land. They'd like to annex it into the city so they can get city services for water and sewer and then, you know, get the urban density zone so it can become, you know, part of the community. But, and we know that Lincoln's a growing community and as our city limits continue to expand, we're reaching out into areas that have, like this picture shows, more of an acreage subdivision that was developed, approved, you know, decades ago. And so these areas are adjacent to the city limits. In some cases, they're nearly surrounded. A lot of times, they do have access to a city street and, you know, under a lot of these criteria, they essentially function as if they were Lincoln residents, but they're not part of the, the city.
Is that South 84?
So 84 streets on the east, yes. That's the north-south road. So under these circumstances, this is where our department comes in and, and working with other city staff, we, we do an analysis of this and make some recommendations. I was mentioning some of the reasons, but one of the big ones is just having equity for all taxpayers. So they are within very close proximity to the city and in these cases contiguous. They're using city facilities, city roads, but not paying for those services. So there's this equity piece that we want to have a discussion on. There's also priority of service areas and one of the big services is for emergency services. So we have some cases that we'll, we'll show you and Andrew can point out that certain roads go from city jurisdiction to county to city to county. And just having a continuous jurisdiction along those corridors does help with emergency response and making sure, you know, who's responsible for taking care of what. And then also, this package would allow for orderly and efficient growth. So we don't have pockets of rural jurisdictions in the middle and surrounded by city limits on all sides. So the annexation power is laid out in the Nebraska state statutes. And I think the annexation legislation has been in place for 100 years plus in some form. But for cities of primary class, which Lincoln is, it says that the city council made any time do an annexation. Those lands should be contiguous or adjacent and should be within close proximity of the existing city limits. So we're not reaching out into, you know, a mile outside of the city into the county and proposing an annexation. These are very close and they're touching the existing city limits. What we then do is we take that state statute and we incorporate it and embody it in our comprehensive plan. And so this annexation policy, we have several slides on this. This is taking those pieces of text from the state statute, but then we also add in some additional criteria. So we're saying that we should look at land in priority B. So that's within tier one and in areas that we anticipate being developed or, or having growth up to the year 2025. Of course, they're contiguous to the city, generally urban in character. That could be because it's been developed or just because of its location, because it's in close proximity to utilities and other services. We do have a case where some land is completely engulfed by the city and so that's another case that we should look at for annexation. This highlights some of the, the points that pertain more to the acreage subdivision areas, of which we have four in this package. So for those areas, we should be respectful of that character, that, that built environment that's been there during the annexation process. We should also take additional steps to ease that transition. Here it says that we should reach out and have public meetings. Again, we had those four public meetings at the end of August where we invited all of those property owners to come and, and discuss what this, what this means to them. And then also giving them advanced notice and explanation of these changes. Andrew will get into some of the timeline of when these things would have an impact, whether it be upon annexation or later on, say in terms of taxes. But also we want to note that a lot of those acreage areas will just remain as they are, that we're not going in and actively as the city going to be rezoning them. Now, if someone came in and said, okay, I wanna get water and sewer and I wanna change my zoning, we'd work with them on that, but that's not part of our proposal with this group. So to kind of highlight the, the criteria that we used, again, we're looking at land in tier one priorities A and B. So that's immediately adjacent to the city limits and in a lot of cases does have infrastructure in place. Land that is completely engulfed or nearly engulfed by the city limits. Land that's contiguous and in urban zoning. I don't believe in this package, we actually have that case of both being contiguous and in urban zoning. And then lastly, land that's contiguous to the city limits in ag zoning, basic infrastructure in place and it's urban in character. And I think that last criteria does apply to a lot of those acreage subdivisions, where they're adjacent to other urbanizing areas and they have water and sewer stubs, you know, right to them. So if we look at the entire area around all of Lincoln, these areas that you see in brownish, kind of gold, all met at least one of those criteria. But it doesn't make sense for us to go out and annex these thousands of acres 'cause they're not all maybe ready at this point. So what we've done is dug deeper into our analysis and worked a lot with Public Works and Utilities, worked with the Health Department and Lincoln Fire and Rescue to really get down to those areas that, you know, are basically considered residents of Lincoln. They have good access to emergency services. They have water and sewer utilities very nearby. So this, this package of eight sub areas is a very strong package, we believe. So it's eight areas, under, just under 1,000 acres, includes 128 homes, three churches and a couple of businesses. With that, I'll turn it over to Andrew.
Yeah, I'll just walk through each area and explain a little bit how they meet each of our criteria. This first one is between First and 14th along Fletcher, northwest Lincoln. Just to explain a little bit, the white area is the existing city limits. The blue is the area proposed for annexation. So you can see this area is surrounded on three sides by the city. It's in growth tier one, priority B. I-80 on the southeast area. It's basically all in the city between 27th and then along West O. And there's this one little piece that's outside of the city today. So this would bring that, that piece of I-80 into the city. The same for Fletcher, if you look, it goes from city, county, city, county, kind of an odd jurisdictional thing. And then one other thing to point out with this area is most of these properties actually have driveways onto a city street today. You can see all the properties along, most of the properties along Fletcher have their driveways onto a city street. And then the properties along 7th on the south side, they're, they actually have driveways literally onto a city street. And if you look on 14th, that's actually an improved city street. There's a trail. They have hydrants in front of their house. So this is an area that we think is, is definitely appropriate for annexation. We'll move on to area B, which is in the northeast corner. This is a property that is more or less undeveloped. It's completely surrounded by the city, though. It's mostly floodway, floodplain. In the image, there's a, there's a rock crush in the southeast corner. That's actually gone now. This picture's from last year. So today, this is just farmland or vacant land. Area C is on the east side near Holdridge and roughly 93rd Street. This is actually mostly the Sunrise Estates subdivision. When this was originally approved, it's, it was a build-through acreage, so it's actually set up for future urban development. The houses are situated in a way that the lots can be subdivided relatively easily. So really from day one, this was set up to be brought into the city. And now it is surrounded by the city on three sides, almost on four sides. So we think the time is appropriate now to bring it in. This would also bring in a chunk of Holdridge that you can see is, is county now with city on both sides. So this would bring all of Holdridge into, to city jurisdiction here. For this area, water and sewer stub up into the entrances of the subdivision. So water and sewer is relatively easy to get to this area. Yeah.
The north side of Holdridge there, what's going on there?
That's what we're gonna look at probably the next time around. So as Paul said, in the first, next year or the year after. It's, it's actually the edge of a basin line. This north area drains north for sewer. The south area goes south. So it's a little more difficult in terms of utilities. It's sewerable, but it may need a little more engineering just to figure out exactly how that's gonna work. And then you can see the lot layout is kind of bizarre here, too. So in terms of where, where the pipe may go, it's a little more challenging. So like Paul had mentioned, we really wanted to focus on the, the most obvious, clear areas. So that's why we just identified south of Holdridge now. North side will be annexed, expect in the next couple of years.
Is Holdridge paved out from 93rd out?
Yep.
Thank you.
Area D is just a little south of where we were. Hillcrest neighborhood is the big piece of this. There's also a couple of areas north of O. The one is the L S substation on the kind of northwest side. But there's a couple of other properties that are almost completely surrounded by the city. On the southwest is the LPS property. And then the big chunk is the Hillcrest subdivision. Per our annexation criteria, it's adjacent to the city. It's in a priority B growth area. And infrastructure is available. There's actually a sewer line in the north side of the subdivision through Anthony Lane where it kind of curves over. So we felt this area was appropriate for annexation 'cause it does, does meet several of our criteria for the comp plan.
Can you talk a little bit about that little chunk over on the eastern side?
Yep. Yep. That is a house, well, it's a house, possibly a home occupation. We, we talked to the gentleman who lives there and it sounds like he runs a business as well. So it's adjacent to the city on two sides. Infrastructure is available. There's a sewer line just a little bit to the northwest where he could tap into that with his own main. And then water is nearby, too, so he could get city utilities.
The other thing, oh, go ahead.
I just was gonna ask Andrew about this 'cause I'd heard from some people in, in Hillcrest concerned about the road running through and Anthony Lane going through. And it hooks up to, we've had a development come before us a few months ago that it's gonna be south of A Street and that road will hook, hook up through there. Is that right?
Are you speaking about where this road dead ends and then development here causing that to punch through? Yeah, I know that there's active discussions about development in that area. That development could very well likely stub a street up to that property, but, I mean, this is a separate property owner.
Right.
They would have to have some sort of arrangement or agreement to have the road go through. By doing this annexation, though, that does not change anything. I do know that for connectivity and things, we like to connect neighborhoods and, and have that done, but we would have to work with that owner.
And we had, I don't know, two, three years ago, the case of the development south of Highway Two and north of Pine Lake where a similar kind of situation existed and people cut through there on roads that weren't up to city standards and problems with that. So, I don't know, just when you're talking about annexation, the consequences of what that might mean to existing neighborhoods, I guess is important to think through.
Yeah, and again, the, the roads will remain unless the group would wanna come forward and ask for a district to improve them. And what we've found with the areas that we're annexing is basically a lot of the roads are in decent shape. But they've been maintained. They've had the crack ceiling done and that kind of a thing.
I think what, what I'm suggesting is that, that potentially the character of those roads will change if they're, if they're going somewhere. Additionally, then there are no sidewalks because enclosed neighborhood, yeah. So a lot of, a lot of consequences, I guess, of what.
I think, too, you could look at the, if that connection were to go through, that would give everyone living in that neighborhood the ability to get down to A Street without having to go a mile out of their way. I think that there'd be some benefit to that, too.
So also, we've had some discussion recently about the, the trail there. Well, that was nice. Okay. About the trail and how it crosses A Street and all the implications of development there and south side as well as, you know, so.
I think, and that's a good point to be brought up. That is a good example why this area is now ripe for the annexation because so much of this area is under discussion or being approved for new development already. And so that is another example of how A Street is handled as well as the trail. So this is becoming an urban area even more so than it was before.
Area E is southwest Lincoln. Here's Yankee Hill. 84th is on the east side. 70th is on the, on the west side. Pine Lakes to the north. So as you can see, looking at the white here, this, this entire area is almost completely surrounded by the city and it's probably gonna be completely surrounded soon.
E.
This is E, so we're down in the southeast corner.
Okay. So we skipped?
H.
We'll be back to H.
Okay, all right. I have this ordering problem, so.
H is kind of this unique one, so we made it last. So the reason we're not including this entire area right away is that there's currently a, a study underway by the city to determine. We know it's sewerable, but there's a question about where the pipe's gonna go, how it's gonna work for some of these, in the Revere, Badger, Carson area. That study is gonna be done end of this year, early next year. Once that study's complete, we're gonna move forward with annexation for those areas. So that'll be in the next year or the year after that. The areas in the blue, there's no question about where sewer is gonna go. Porchy actually has a sewer line that goes kind of where like the S is and the word porchy. It goes north-south through those lots. So they're actually adjacent to sewer, city sewer. Dunrowen, sewer is in Yankee, or no, sewer is just to the north side of those lots. And they're kind of their own separate pocket and Public Works is pretty confident how this is gonna be sewed if they were to request city sewer in the future. So we're focusing on these two specific areas for now. But yes, the entire area will be annexed probably within the next year or, or two years when we do the next study. Area F is the Yankee Hill Golf Course and then one residential property. The golf course is surrounded on three sides. If you zoom out a little bit, it's, it's almost completely surrounded on four sides of cities east of that neighborhood as well. Utilities would be available if the golf course on their own decides they wanna redevelop. Sewer is now, everything would drain south and sewer is in Yankee Hill. So it would all drain to Yankee Hill there. And then water's in both streets, so water's not an issue at all. The residential neighborhood to the east is being left out now. That's actually a tier one priority C area. So per our comp plan, we're not really looking at that until 2025 or later. But really, the big driving force on that is the utilities as, as they move across Yankee Hill. Right now, they, they're actually at, end about where the word Yankee Hill is on that map. So they're not available to the east yet. Of course, as the city continues to develop, south of Yankee Hill, moving east, that area's gonna be a future candidate as well.
Something else kind of unique to mention here is that the golf course clubhouse is in the city limits. You see that notch along Sammatt Hale. That's the clubhouse, but the actual golf course is not.
So the, this is kind of a unique situation where the clubhouse is in, but the course is out.
Yeah. I hope it's that.
So area G is the southwest area. This is near southwest Village. So most of the surrounding area was annexed in 2006. There's basically this one remaining parcel that's open space and then there's a storage building on that parcel. So this would bring that in. It's almost completely surrounded by the city. It would also bring in this little stretch of the, of the highway.
Yeah, it was that one.
There's a little stretch of the highway that you can see is in city, then out, then in, then out again. This would kind of clarify that jurisdiction a little bit by making it more solidly in the city limits. And this last area is area H. We're circling back around to it. This is actually a somewhat odd situation. The parcel on the north, that long parcel, it's actually, under one ownership, it's one single lot. But half their lot, the west half is in the city. The east portion is outside the city. They actually have a storage building straddling half in the city, half out. So it's just kind of this weird situation. And then the south, the church owns those storage buildings as well. So that's also just a chunk of the church's premises. So we have this case where we have two properties where the main buildings are in the city, but they're, basically their rear yards are out of the city. It's not something that we typically would do. So this is, we look at this more of kind of a cleanup action just to bring their whole premises into the city.
On that image, too, you'll see the acreages that we left out at Talleyson 88. And mainly that has to do with a sewer issue. They have actually a private sewer that runs through them to serve part of Firethorn. But as the Stevens Creek trunk continues south, that will go away and they'll be able to connect. So that would be another area in the future that we would be looking at for annexation.
So these annexations will provide revenue to the city, of course, but they will also produce costs. In the study, we have a kind of overview analysis of the property tax revenue versus potential costs. One to keep in mind with that is there's some of those soft costs we didn't really calculate. Just the general idea of as the city grows, more staff equipment may be needed. To put this in a little bit of context, expecting about 3,500 to 4,000 people a year in population growth, this is probably about 300 people. City has 2,900 miles of roads. This is about four and a half miles of roads. So, I mean, it is certainly a piece of the city's growth, but it's, it's a small piece. Looking at the context of how we're even gonna grow just this year, this isn't something that's gonna throw everything out of whack by bringing in these annexations. It's basically in line with the growth we'd expect year over year. And I wanna walk through real quick some of the impact on the annexed properties 'cause it's obviously gonna be a big change for some people. The first is the property tax increase. It's roughly about $300 per every $100,000 valuation. So given the assessed valuation of most of the properties here, it's somewhere between $900 and $1,200. It's gonna be the tax, property tax change. One thing to note, this would be, assuming these are done by January 1st, this would be for the 2018 tax year, so it wouldn't go into effect until 2019. They wouldn't be paying until 2019. So there is a bit of a buffer period or transition period, I guess. Wheel tax would, of course, then be paid for a typical passenger vehicle. It's $74 right now. As Paul mentioned, the zoning wouldn't change. They're actually already in our zoning jurisdiction. Even then, the zoning district wouldn't change. Most of these are AG, agriculture or AGR. Any zoning change would most likely come from property owners looking to redevelop their own properties. Roads will remain. We wouldn't automatically be up. automatically be up, upgrading them to urban standards. Wells can remain. They do require an annual permit with the health department. Right now, that's a hundred and thirty dollars, but they do get well testing out of that, so they do get a benefit from that permit. There are, I believe, thirteen customers on rural water. They can remain on rural water. They're not forced to switch to city water. Septic systems can remain in most cases. There's fifteen properties that are, if they're within three-hundred feet of an existing city sewer and it's considered to be available, basically it's in front of their house, they'd be required to tap into that per city ordinance. And there's fifteen properties right now that would be required to tap into city sewer upon annexation.
You said it was within?
Three-hundred feet.
Three-hundred feet.
Yep.
So at what point do we require people on rural water to go on city water and we buy out the rural water district? What, at what point does that happen?
That's up to them. We-
Them being the property owner or the rural water?
Typically, the property owners, but I, I will say, so for example, say there's a subdivision with twelve people and half of them switch to city water, rural water may just cease service in that area, just because it doesn't make sense to run water lines to serve a few people. But typically, it would be up to the, the customers themselves.
Okay.
So.
There would be a buyout eventually. You know, upon annexation, if they're on rural water, they can stay on rural water. If they want to do an assessment district and get city water, then there's kind of this prorated amount that at the time they connect to city water, the city would have a payment to the district. After ten years, that's forgiven.
So if property owners are looking to upgrade to city water, sewer, urban roads, the process would be via assessment district. And one thing to stress is that would be a completely separate action from this annexation. That would have to be a separate request to be approved by you. But we have Bob Simmering here from Public Works who can explain a little bit about the assessment district process for us.
Thank you for your chair, David. When we met with the groups out there, we did hand out our brochure on assessment districts to give people an overview of that system. It's not mandatory. It would take a petition by those owners to request an assessment district. That then goes to a review committee that would make a recommendation to the city council. On, in the condition of water or sewer, it doesn't require majority. On roads, we generally require a fifty-one percent on that petition. Sewer and water are, could be brought forward by one or a few people. Those assessment districts then are, the design is done, the, assuming the council approves it, the value is set on the project and there is an assessment against those properties. It's spread over a twenty-year period with interest. The people, as they hook up, are required to pay their impact fees and they do pay their tap fee and their service lines. So in general, that's the assessment district that we operate under.
We did hear from a few property owners that they're interested in doing that, so it, it could be likely that that comes forward at some point, too.
Jane?
What is the typical cost, understanding that each situation is so different when the, the property owner would like to tap into, considering their circumstance, location, et cetera, but what is the average cost that they would incur?
They could incur the entire cost. There have been many cases that the city looks at that where there might be properties only on one side of the street that are being serviced, and so there's adjustment made to that. And there have been many cases where the city has assessed forty dollars a front foot against those properties, which is very similar to what the cost of a new development water main or sewer main might be.
Okay.
Other questions? Mary?
Thanks for outlining so many of the details and the impact on the residents. You mentioned that there are costs to the city. Do you have a sense yet of what added maintenance cost there will be for Public Works in particular, but any other departments as a result of, you know, the miles of roads and the utility work?
Yeah, the, the estimated road maintenance costs were thirty thousand a year, roughly.
On, on all of the proposed annexations?
Overall, yes.
Because you said it was only four, four miles?
Four, a little over four miles, yeah.
There would be. You know, you, you think about the emergency services and you think about fire, rescue, all of that. You know, just to put a dollar amount per property is not something that we did, but we do have Chief De Spain here who can, I think in a next slide or two, speak to some of that.
Cindy, do you have a question first?
I did. I just wanted to go back first. I, I had a question about the, the study itself, like how, you had mentioned it took us several months to put it together and then, and publish it. How long was the study prior to that? Prior to actually putting together the proposal?
The amount of time that we had spent?
Yes, yeah.
I think it started late last year and then just kind of took over into early 2017.
Okay. And then, my second question, because we are looking at bringing in acreages and so forth, and some may have the type of equipment that's common to those, and I just don't know the answer whether those type of equipment, whether that's subject to wheel tax or not. Do you know? Does anyone know that?
For farm equipment?
Yeah, for farm equipment, tractors, anything that they would, I know that a lot of times it's subject to insurance, the same as road-worthy vehicles, so.
I know there's a, there's a complete schedule of every type of, you know, vehicle out there that would pay wheel tax based on weight and things like that, too. Specifically, tractors or farm equipment, I'm not.
Okay, thank you.
So we, we do have Chief De Spain who can come up and talk. Do we have any more questions for Bob on any Public Works items?
We know where to find Bob.
Thanks. Just questions in general. Wouldn't you have the neighborhood meetings? What kinds of concerns or questions did you get from, from people in the neighborhoods and what was your read on how people are feeling about this? Especially people who live across the street, like on Holdridge, you know, their neighbors aren't getting annexed, but they are.
Yeah, I, I mean, a lot of the questions centered around these assessment districts, actually, because some people think that if you're annexed, that means the city's going to build the sewer and water lines up to your street and upgrade all the roads. And we all know that's, that's not exactly how it works. You have to pay for it. So yes, a lot of it revolves around the cost of the assessment districts. If we want to do an assessment, how much does it cost? If we don't want to do an assessment district, can we just not do it? You know, that, that type of thing. And I'll get into it in a little bit. We also, we have a slide about the different city ordinances that come into effect that aren't in the county. And we had people who were concerned about, like, they, they burn leaves and things in the, in the fall and they won't be able to do that in the city. Those types of, I don't want to say smaller things, but you know, those, those types of things that maybe we wouldn't think of.
Lifestyle changes.
Yeah, lifestyle changes. I mean, overall, I think the lifestyle's going to remain the same, but there are some little, little things that may change like that.
But generally speaking, being zoned in or being brought into the city wasn't something that was a surprise or objectionable?
I mean, people weren't excited about it. You saw the, the tax implications of it. I wouldn't say it's a surprise. Many of these areas were proposed in 2008 and we ended up with drawing those applications for various reasons. And all of these areas are almost surrounded by the city, so I wouldn't think anyone would be surprised. No one suggested to us that they were really surprised that we were proposing annexation. But I know, I mean, people weren't, a lot of people weren't excited about it necessarily. They just had a lot of questions and concerns because it is, it is a change.
It is different, too, because this is city-initiated, you know, and some of the conversations we had with the, the property owners, I would say as a group, not too many were really looking forward to this, but we did have some more smaller one-on-one kind of conversations and we heard from several people that they were supportive of it and will want to pursue getting those utility services.
So we'll have Chief De, Chief De Spain explain a little bit about the, the fire implications. I think this is probably one of the biggest immediate benefits of annexation.
Yeah, so, again, thank you for letting me come speak for a minute. So, having looked at these annexations, the, the good news is the amount that they're bringing in is so small in terms of housing units and the demand for service is pretty small, so it's, it's, it's pretty small. I think the benefits are, for us, anytime we can kind of square boundaries and kind of keep the gerrymandering of the, the city. So for a cab response, we know if there's an accident on the street, we know that we're going versus this, well, there's this thousand-foot section that's not. And where are we at in with that thousand-foot section? So that helps with response times because now there's a little less confusion on which agency is going to go or, or not go. The only concerns that I communicated kind of moving forward is anytime we annex property that doesn't have fire protection systems in it, and really, any small area is not that big of a deal. I just use the analogy of death by a thousand cuts is, part of our insurance rating is based on what percentage of the city is covered by fire protection water, so hydrants. And so if we kept doing this and we never put hydrants in over time, that could adversely impact rates for someone in the middle of town. But it's pretty small and at this point, you know, the housing units that are coming in are, it's, it's not a big issue. It'd be almost immeasurable at this point. And as we bring in development, it does have long, long-term planning to bring in hydrants, kind of fix that. So it's really just as long as you don't go too fast, it's, it's very reasonable and the impact would be fairly, fairly limited. So, in terms of LFR, the impact is, is pretty, pretty minor, almost immeasurable at this point.
Jane?
Chief De Spain, in one of the subareas, sees, I believe they have the southeast rural fire district on that corner of Eighty-fourth and Holdridge?
Yeah.
So how does, how does that impact how you handle service, then?
Well, it, it simplifies a few things along Holdridge, but at the end of the day, whether they're in the city or not, it doesn't change what they would go to or not go to, let's say, outside the city or inside the city. It just helps clean up the line a little bit. Now, if the building itself is annexed in the city, there's probably some rules that they'll have to follow based on the city, just like they would any other business, but it really doesn't change how we operate or any adverse impacts.
Carl?
So, providing hydrants, is that, that wouldn't take a, a district, would it, for, to provide that service, or, or would it?
It would be part of the water district.
I would note, though, that many of these areas, North Fourteenth Street, there's fire hydrants in front of those properties.
Okay.
Because when Fourteenth was built to arterial standards, a trail was put in, hydrants were put in on that side.
Okay, great.
So, that, that circumstance exists in a couple of these other areas as well.
And ISO looks at, at this seven-hundred to a thousand-foot window, so just because you bring in homes that don't have a hydrant right in front of them, they still get credit. It's just when you annex a large area and, and areas deep inside that new annexed area don't have it, that's what could impact us. And you'd have to have a lot of that over a long period of time before it impacted us, you know, in terms, in terms of your rates if you're like in the urban core.
So as an old, emphasize old, rural volunteer fireman, we had tankers.
Yeah.
Do you guys have tankers that you can use for places?
We do not. So, part of the advantage we have is you don't need tankers when you get there quick enough and you stop it at room of origin. But what we do do is we have agreements with the rural agencies that we will call them. If we get into an area where we need them, we will call for them. And if we, and if we saw larger areas coming in and we knew there was going to be a long time, then we would come back and ask for, to, to put a water tender, a water tanker on the, on part of our apparatus list. That would be difficult right now, but we have, the, the requests are so few and far between that partnerships with our rural partners are the more efficient way to do it right now. And if that was, something happened where that, they just weren't available when we needed them or, or in a, in a timely manner, then we would change that. But at this point, I think this is pretty, pretty minor.
Okay. Other questions? Thank you very much, gentlemen. Anything else you want to add?
We've got one more slide.
Okay, let's do it.
So of course, this area would be now served by Lincoln Police. It would become part of Lincoln Public Schools. Several of these areas are actually already in the LPS district, even though they're outside the city. Really, it's, the big areas that don't have it are areas C and D on the east side. Those are both in, in Waverly School District. But almost all the remaining properties are in LPS. And then, so I did mention some of those miscellaneous city ordinances. There's things like animal licensing, restrictions on large animals. You can have horses, things like that, if you have a certain amount of acreage in the city. I believe there's one property we're annexing that has a couple horses and they may or may not have enough area. They can keep the existing horses, but in terms of replacing them, they may have to cut back on the number of horses they have, potentially. Discharging firearms, can't do that in the city, do it in the county. Fireworks, there are obviously some limitations in the city that aren't in the county. Open burning, like I mentioned, it's much, much stricter rules in the city than there are in the county. And then, you know, something like weed abatement, there's not necessarily the same weed abatement rules in the county as there are in the city. The city's a little more stringent in terms of weed abatement. So those are kind of the miscellaneous ordinances that apply. A few other things we've heard about, for example, barbed wire fences. They're allowed in the city, but they have to be five feet off the ground, whereas in the county, you can imagine some people may have some barbed wire fences along the ground. So that, that sums it up. Eight areas, nine-hundred-and-eighty-seven acres. We think these are the clearest areas for annexation with this package. So, do we have any questions?
Carl?
Just, I'm just eyeballing the map. I see a few areas that, that you have not included. For example, to the southwest of the airport, areas there. Then just south of there, off of probably West A Street, areas there, and then going in northeast Lincoln, up north of Havelock at Seventy, I think, east of Seventy, and there. So, those are just areas that, as they're developed, they'll come forward? Is that the idea, or you'll look at those in overtime?
Yep. So areas that are more or less farm fields now are not developed in, in subdivision or anything like that. We left those out because, yeah, they will eventually, as they redevelop, request urban zoning, want utilities, so they'll just be annexed on their own in the future as they develop. And then some of those areas just can't be serviced, city utilities right now, too.
Jane?
I'm sorry I was late, but did you, did you already talk about how the neighborhood meetings went? You did? Okay. We'll rehash that. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be back in about thirteen minutes for the director's organizational meeting.
Okay, great. Okay, great.